Very good. All right, folks, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, May 9, 2023. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all very much. For the folks watching at home, here's what we have on the agenda for tonight. We have guests from the Red Hook Central School District who will be making a very brief, seven minutes, I understand, budget presentation. We then have a resolution to just update our police services agreement to reflect 2023 figures. We are going to approve a contract on an award. We've received yet another Clean Energy Communities Award. We are going to be purchasing all-electric landscaping equipment and going, not only taking care of our municipal properties with it, but going through the community's different neighborhoods and demonstrating for residents the benefits of utilizing this type of equipment. And all of this is funded through NICE CERDA. We have a resolution to set public hearing on the acquisition of what we're calling Cooking Ham Farm West. You probably heard a couple of months ago that the town was going to acquire the Cooking Ham Farm East properties. Tonight, we are setting a public hearing on acquiring the western side of Cooking Ham Farm. And that will be set for a couple of weeks from now, our next town board meeting. We also have a couple of resolutions to approve some engineering task orders, in particular, a sewer extension feasibility study. So as you all have witnessed over the last year, finally, after 17 years of effort, the Village of Red Hook has a central sewer system for the central business district. It actually comes down almost to the town line. And so what we'd like to do now is study what's involved with extending that system from where it is near the package plant all the way on down through essentially to Hannaford Conway, that intersection there. So we'll be discussing within our engineer tonight what's involved and what grant funding may be available to us after we conduct that study. And then we are going to approve an extension to the water connection agreement, the Village of Red Hook. That's the ability for the town and the village of water districts to service each other in the event that there's a need. Okay, so that's tonight's agenda. And so we start off, it's the first meeting of the month. We have a summary of the finances for the town. This is for the period ending April 30. We started with an opening balance of $9,335,000. We had receipts of $610,000, dispersments of $640,000. We have a remaining balance of $9,305,000. You also have attached for you, folks, the variance report. Don't know if you've had a chance to review that. Christine, here's your packet. Chris Shaw, here's your packet.
Oh.
It was up here for some reason.
Oh.
Well, that feels good.
Yeah. You have new packets. We also, by the way, need to vote on a budget adjustment for Red Hook response. Remember, they made that $8,500 request. Give us a very detailed list. We need to add that as a budget adjustment in our financial reports for tonight.
Mr. Supervisor, did you print out the Type 1 resolution?
No.
Okay.
Any questions about the supervisor's report? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt both the report and make the budget adjustment for Red Hook response.
So you moved.
He can ask for a motion.
Oh, yeah, well, I did move.
You would never know. We've been doing this for years, wouldn't you? Okay, you made the motion? Okay. Jacob, did you second that?
Nope, but I will second.
Who's on first? All in favor, Julia Solomon. Myself, I, thank you very much. We also have a town clerk's report. Although I don't know that... There it is. You made it. Shrink it a little bit more. Can we read it? There we go.
The town clerk's report for the period of April 1 to April 30, 2023. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,775.39. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $48. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $67.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $745.61. Total state, county, and local revenues, $6,636.50. And I hereby certify... I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 30374 to 30481, processed in the month of April 2023, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Thank you very much, Dan. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
Some of them.
Second.
Very good. We're getting the hang of it. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you very much. Very briefly, announcements, just to remind folks that we have Apple Blossom Day coming up this Saturday. And that would be the 13th of May, from 10 o'clock to 4:00 p.m. That's correct. Chris Shaw?
Sounds like...
Sounds really good. We want to thank our Red Hook Rotary, who conducts this event each and every year. It'll be a wonderful time. We also want to thank them because they co-sponsored one of our events this weekend. That was Town Cleanup Day we had on Sunday. We had a really good attendance. We also had the same day in the morning. We had Shred Day, which, believe you me, is super popular in the town of Red Hook. And we want to thank all our volunteers for that. The other events we've had in the last few weeks, E-Waste Day, we had terrific turnout for E-Waste Day, Repair and Cafe. We had 96 pets show up two weekends ago here. And in fact, some of them did their business right on this carpet here for free rabies vaccination. And so we want to thank the DCSPCA and Dutchess County Department of Community and Behavioral Health for putting on that event as well. So that's all I have for announcements. Anybody else? No? Very good. Moving right along, we have the dynamic duo. School Superintendent Janet McGorman and Business Manager Seba... What have they given you? Have they given you more titles?
Assistant Superintendent.
Close enough.
Assistant Superintendent. Bruce, come on up. Are you both doing a budget presentation?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
He wants to come...
Please, if you would. If you'd be kind enough, just the microphone so we can pick it up.
We have something to hand out, too.
You have handouts.
Correct. So thanks for having us. We're going to give you a little bit of overview of the budget, and then Bruce is going to talk a little bit more about the numbers. But you can see at the top, our priorities when formulating this budget was to remain under the tax cap. So Bruce will talk a little bit about how difficult that is with inflation, but that's what we did with this budget. As you know, enrollment is declining in Red Hook School District and all across New York State. So what we're doing is looking at rightsizing the school district. So we have four retirees or resignations that were not filling, and we're not adding any positions to the school district. We're going to continue to support our two pre-K programs. So we have 34-year-olds in our building. It's absolutely wonderful, and we know the research on pre-K. So we want to continue to preserve that program. We had one in the past and added the second one, I think, two years ago. We want to continue to preserve that. As you know, we do a lot with mental health in the school district. We brought on a social worker at the middle school and high school. Now we have a social worker in each one of our buildings and a school psychologist, as well as a counselor at the elementary school and counselors at the high school and middle school. So we want to make sure we preserve that because there is a lack of mental health services all over. We want to expand our secondary courses. So I think many of you know, and Ken's here, too, that we're going to expand. We're starting Future Farmers of America, where our students will be working with local farmers to learn agriculture, hopefully want to stay in Red Hook and see some of the jobs. We also recently had a trade fair at the school. We were bringing local businesses to talk to students. They're like, of course, college is a great path for you, but there are other paths that you can take. We are also encouraging our teachers to team up so students can get credits in Family and Consumer Science and ELA and take a class called Word to Table, where they read and also learn about the culture and food. And we're going to continue with our sequence with Computer Science by adding AP Computer Science A. We're continuing to expand our theater program and our performing arts with the back of the house and the front of the house with existing staff. We're going to continue to support our bilingual outreach. We're finding more and more students with interrupted education coming into the school district. And we have Carla, who works with us, who does outreach and talks to students and their families about American education and the expectations, and that's really important to us. We also find something extremely important is our School Resource Officer Program with the Red Hook Police Department. So we have police officers on both of our campuses full-time for safety and security. They all help us with our safety team and just looking at overall security in the school district. We're also looking to continue to upgrade our facilities. We're hoping that you're going to see beautiful windows on the Mill Road in the next year and a half, roofs, some stuff you won't see because it'll be up in the ceilings, but continue to make sure that we're maintaining our facilities according, really having a good plan over the next course of 20 years. And we're going to continue with our Year Two of our One-to-One Initiative. We found that some students during the pandemic only had their phone or didn't have a device at all at home. So every one of our 6th through 12th graders has their own Apple computer, and they take it to and from school. So we use some grant money for that, but just to maintain that. So when our seniors leave, we have to take those back, reimage them, and then redeploy. So that's something that we're going to continue to do with our students. So Bruce is going to talk about the numbers.
Thank you. So let me talk first a little bit about the process, just very briefly. So the budget that we're talking about this evening was adopted by the Board of Education back on April 12. You may remember that that was before the state adopted their budget this year. So we had to do a little bit of estimating, but we did pretty well. We based it off the governor's proposal. And when the final legislative run came in, it was really very similar to that. So as we run down to the end of the process, there are a couple of key dates remaining. So a week from today is the statewide budget vote date, May 16, the third Tuesday in May. And in Red Hook, we will be voting again at the Mill Road 35 Cafeteria at the Mill Road Elementary School, and that'll be from noon until 9 o'clock in the evening. If you bump into anybody who would like to vote but thinks they're not registered, they do have to be registered to vote. There's one more opportunity to get registered. That's tomorrow afternoon from noon until 5 o'clock at the Mill Road Elementary School on the 35 side in the lobby. So register tomorrow, vote on May 16. On the expenditure side of the budget, in summary, that budget is currently $58.3 million, and the proposed budget is $60,277,000 for a rate of increase of 3.38% from existing to proposed. The revenue side is actually a lot more interesting this year. Again, we projected the revenue based on the governor's proposal. Our primary revenue is actually the local property tax source, with about 60, almost 65% of our budget being funded that way. And this year, our tax cap calculation amounted to a 4.96 tax cap, being the increase over the current year tax levy. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes as to why that's a little higher than what we would normally expect. And it has largely to do with the capital project. The board actually assigned an additional $150,000 from the fund balance in order to try to lower the tax levy a little bit more. And the tax levy proposed with this budget is at 4.55%, which is about $152,000 below the tax cap. We do have some notable miscellaneous revenues in the budget. We can finally earn interest again on deposits that we have that we have not spent. So a couple of years back, we were earning 10 basis points, or about 0.1% on investments that we're allowed to make. Now we are approaching 5% on those same allowable investments. So that's good news on the revenue side. And then the other thing that is of interest, again, these are in the miscellaneous category, but notable, are the number of non-resident tuition-paying families that we have. And we have about 12 students in the district right now whose parents pay tuition for them to attend as non-residents. And that is an increasing notable revenue source for the district. On the property tax cap calculation, I'd just like to talk through why that's 4.96% versus normally landing in the mid to upper 2% range. And there are really three factors there. So the one that folks are familiar with is the CPI factor, the Consumer Price Index factor. And that is really where the concept of a 2% tax cap came from. So the CPI factor enables you folks, as well as us, to inflate the tax levy by CPI capped at 2%. So the CPI measure that we use is the 2022 CPI measure. In 2022, CPI was 8%, but the maximum number that can go into the calculation is 2%. So that's an inflationary or an increase factor when calculating the tax cap. This year, we had a tax-based growth factor of 1.32%. That's unusually high for us. Typically, the tax-based growth factor within the Red Hook Central School is maybe a quarter of a percent, half a percent. On a high year, maybe 3/4 of a percent. This year, 1.32%. The tax-based growth factor is designed to measure real growth in the property value within the district. So when I say real growth, I'm not talking about my property used to be assessed at $300,000, and now it's assessed at $400,000. I'm talking about new buildings, new additions, new businesses, opening, real growth and improvements to property, a real expansion of the tax base. So in the tax cap calculation, there is a factor in there to account for an expanding tax base. And this year, that number for us is 1.32%. The final factor in calculating the tax cap is the capital exclusion. So about a year and a half ago, in February of 2022, the community came out and supported a $22 million capital project for the school district. And at the time, we talked about that likely having about a 2% impact the year that the debt service came in, being the year 2324. So the actual impact of that local share of debt service coming in in 2324 is 1.64%. And there is an exclusion in the tax cap to allow for something that has already been voter-approved that is then hitting in, in this case, the 2324 year. So when you put all of those pieces together, we have an unusually high tax cap of 4.96%. The board has worked hard to get as far under that tax cap as they can at 4.55%. And if you think about it, if you take that previously approved cost of debt service on the capital project out, we're right back in the 2.9% vicinity where we would normally be, and again, under the tax cap. So with those things said, I'll talk briefly about the possibility of a contingent budget. So a contingent budget happens in the event that next week, the voters don't approve the budget. The board has one more opportunity in June to put out either the same budget or a modified budget. If it again fails to get voter approval, we end up on a board-adopted, a board-created contingent budget. That would require substantial reduction in the tax levy. It would, by law, mandate a number of other things. It would eliminate almost all equipment purchases from the budget because those purchases require voter approval. It would eliminate the free use of community facilities, free use by the community of our facilities. We'd be required to charge the identifiable cost of use of the building. And it would eliminate the transfer to the capital fund that we do on an annual basis, and that's an important one. Every year, we have in the general fund budget $100,000 that transfers to the capital fund. And we do a relatively minor capital improvement with that $100,000. And by doing it that way, we get $64,400 back the next year in the form of state aid. In a contingent budget, we're not allowed to make that transfer to the capital fund. In all likelihood, we would still have the need for those facilities' improvements, but we'd have to do it in the regular budget, and we'd be unable to garner the state aid related to it. But the real issue for us this year of a contingent budget would be we've already been approved by the voters to move forward with the $22 million capital project. We've awarded contracts, we've made commitments, we've borrowed some of the money. That's all in progress, and there's really no stopping that at this point. And yet, a contingent budget would take away the resources necessary to proceed, while at the same time, we have our regular operation that's going to cost more going into the next year. And we would be just plain unable to meet those capital debt service commitments while continuing the same existing program. So this would be a very difficult year to be on a contingent budget. In addition to the budget, there are a number of other items on the ballot. We have an election for two board seats. These are the board seats that were regularly scheduled to expire June 30 of 2023. We have two incumbents and two newcomers running for those two seats. What is not on the ballot next week is the seat vacated by the passing of Kevin Storrs. That happened on a timeline where it was impossible for us to do all the legal things necessary to get that seat on the ballot. So that will happen on June 20 in a special election, a board election. Only candidates who want to participate in that, who want to run in that June 20 election would have to redo the process of getting a petition, getting it signed, getting on the ballot. Those would then be due on May 22 for folks who want to run at that June election. We have a bus and vehicle proposition on the ballot. It's for $470,000. If that's approved, it would allow us to buy two full-size buses, a 30-passenger bus and a replacement facilities vehicle, our courier van. We are still envisioning these vehicles to be unleaded vehicles, although we are moving strongly in the direction of examining and moving toward purchasing electric vehicles. And as most of you know, that becomes a mandate in 2027, and we have to have converted our full fleet by 2035. We are recommending to the community a capital reserve fund, and that's on the ballot as a separate proposition. I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a minute. Both libraries, the Red Hook Public Library, as well as the Tivoli Free Library, have approached us to be on the ballot. Our only option is to say yes. They go on the ballot, and then if the voters say yes to their request for a modest increase, we collect those additional taxes and pass them through to those two entities. And then the final item on the ballot is a student board member. We've had that for, I'm going to say, about 12 years. But in order to keep that student board member there with a student view, non-voting, but with a student view toward the conversations that we have at that table, it requires that the voters reapprove that every two years, and this is the year when that needs to happen. The capital reserve is an opportunity for us to set aside current surpluses for the purpose of funding future capital projects without the need to tax for that portion, which would be available in that quote-unquote savings account. So during COVID, our operations were downsized. We did develop some surpluses, which are currently sitting in fund balance. It's also possible that going forward, a budgetary surplus could develop. We're not allowed to plan a surplus to route to the capital reserve, but if a surplus were to develop, that could be placed in the capital reserve, again, to fund future capital needs. The voters maintain pretty extensive control over the capital reserve, so if they think it's a good idea, it requires voter approval to establish the capital reserve. The board would then have the authority to fund that reserve from surpluses. And then it requires voter approval again for a specific project in order to take money from that reserve. So the voters maintain steady, ongoing control over the functioning of that reserve. We're proposing a $5 million magnitude in a 10-year duration. So a $5 million magnitude means that that is the maximum amount that could flow through the capital reserve over that 10-year period. So as an example, if it were possible to fund that to, say, $2.5 million, and then the voters were to approve a project using that money, the fund would only be allowed to have another $2.5 million totaling five. So you don't get to go on back all the way to five if you've already used part of it once. The 10-year duration means that at the end of 10 years, if there's money in the capital reserve that hasn't been approved by the voters for a capital project, it falls back to the general fund, where it would either support the program at that point or be an offset to taxes at that point for the taxpayers. So that is a separate item on the ballot. And I think that takes me to conclusion. I think we exceeded your seven minutes, though.
I was just going to say, you're over budget.
Yeah.
No, but that's all good information.
But concluding comments, as Janet said, the budget is really maintenance of program with a few minor enhancements. We stay under the tax cap, and this would really be a very difficult year for a contingent budget to occur. And we thank you for having us in.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I know I do, but anybody else who wants to?
Real quick, the families that don't live in Red Hook who choose to send their children here, what is the tuition that they pay? Is that surplus funding?
Well, we've now learned to build that into our revenue side of our budget, so it really isn't surplus funding. Although what I would say is the growth in those families has happened a little faster than we had projected. So in some years, that has actually resulted in surplus funding. I think of these numbers as relatively high numbers. They actually come from a portion of the state aid formula that generates what the non-resident tuition will be. For students that are in grades K through 6, it's right around $16,000 for the year. And for students in grades 7 through 12, it's right around $19,000 per year. And we typically collect that by semester, so half. And then if anything happens where that relationship is severed, we do prorate the money back to those families on a full-month basis. So if they became residents in October, they would get refunded November, December, and January from the first semester.
Thank you.
Just following up on that, what's the enrollment now approximately?
Our enrollment for this year, I believe, just dropped below 16. We're in the high 1,500.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's been dropping countywide, statewide. It's been dropping, and same here in Red Hook.
Yeah, our kindergarten class is around 90, and our senior class about 150.
So what that means, that... So what that means, that dreaded cost per pupil, is that $40,000?
Uh, it isn't quite that high, but it is, it is growing.
And so we're billing 19, but potentially if we were to extrapolate, it's nearly $40,000 per student?
Uh, total, total cost, yes. Yep, supported, again, about 65% local, about 30% state.
We might be running a deficit in theory on the, on the, out of expressness. Okay.
Uh, yeah, although, um, generally speaking, they sort of absorb into the system. You could also, you could almost argue no identifiable cost for that individual pupil, but...
You're not getting an extra teacher, they're rapping into the classroom.
They can't come if the class is not.
Right, right. Allow $40,000. My question relates to solar. You know, it's an important question. Now, we voted three years ago?
2019.
Four, four years ago?
Yep.
So where are we?
I believe you will see solar panels going on the buildings this summer. It has been an incredible...
Your husband was here last year saying those very words.
Did I say that? Did I say that?
I thought you...
It has been an...
Verbatim.
It has been an incredible administrative struggle to get this across the finish line. Having to do with, with design and the New York Power Authority and the state ed and the approval and the aid related to it has been an incredible administrative struggle to get it across the finish line. I really do think you will see those on the buildings this summer.
Okay. The last question relates to, I saw in some of your materials, just sort of impacts per household, and I noticed we're using sort of very old data with that. You know, when we update our budgets and we say the impact per household, we use current median or average homes in, in our community. 250, I think there's only, there's less than 7% of the homes now are assessed at 250 or, or lower. Just, I'm wondering if you might adopt a scale where you sort of track the market when you're...
Yep, I, I think that's a good recommendation. I think we'll move in that direction.
That's all. Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions about the bus and vehicle proposition. So you said it was two buses and then another vehicle, or maybe two, two other vehicles. What's the, like, percentage of the fleet that that covers?
Ah, dear. Um, I, and it's, it's actually, it's two full-size buses, it's a 30-passenger, and then the other is a facilities vehicle. The full fleet is in the vicinity of 30. It's probably actually a little more than that. I'd need my transportation director to weigh in on the exact count.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we aim for a 10-year replacement cycle. We, we have never quite made it. We're usually around a 12-year replacement cycle on the fleet.
Okay. And then you mentioned, I think, moving towards seriously considering electric vehicles. What does that mean?
Yep. So what we've, what we've been working on this year, so, so the, the electric buses are about three times as, as costly as the unleaded. So there's a financial element there. We are understanding that there are grants available, but those grants are fairly specifically targeted, and so we're doing investigation toward grant funding that would be available to help offset the cost of those vehicles. We've engaged a study of our entire facility. It's called a clean energy study. It's going to be through our architect, and it's going to be supported partially by an assertive grant, and that's going to involve a look at the infrastructure necessary to charge vehicles, as well as a look at electric vehicles themselves. We have commissioned a smaller study to analyze our existing routes and which ones would most efficiently be converted first to an electric, electric-style vehicle. And we actually borrowed an electric vehicle from our, from our bus dealer a couple of months ago, and we trialed it around on, on some runs for about a week. So a, a, a significant amount of consideration has gone into getting ready for that conversion, but we don't feel like we're quite there ready yet. I would say we're in good company around Dutchess County. I'm not aware of a district in Dutchess County that has an electric vehicle in the fleet yet. We do know that Hyde Park Central School has one on the ballot. Just like us, it's a separate proposition, and one of the buses in the fleet proposed by Hyde Park would be an electric vehicle.
Yeah, I guess like the reason I'm asking is because, you know, you kind of explained the cost difference, and to my mind, the expense is going to increase over time as more schools are required to do this in, you know, four years. So, you know, I'm just curious what goes into the consideration of trying to get ahead of that to maybe save costs over time by converting a portion of fleet in the next few years instead of waiting to start doing what everybody else is doing.
So we are, we are moving in that direction. We didn't feel ready this year to put that on the proposition.
But doesn't, I, sorry to question your, your decision to, to put it on the ballot, but does it really make sense to ask people to fund old technology and, and dirty fuels for vehicles? Does that make sense when you can lease them temporarily if you don't feel you can afford them? And the subsidies and the ongoing costs are so much less, we, we know this firsthand in, in Red Hook. We purchased electric for our departments and stuff.
Yep. So, so I think we are quickly getting to that point. I, I, I think we are very quickly getting, and even when you look at the 10-year replacement cycle, which is more of a 12-year replacement cycle, and the thought right now that the fleet needs to be converted by 30, 35, I think, I think we're quickly approaching the point you described. I don't think we're quite there yet when you weigh all the various cost factors and, and operational factors.
I hear you, and I, I don't think we're buying a fossil fuel vehicle anymore. And leasing may be an option, right? Will we have that choice someday to vote that on a ballot?
Um, the, the leasing option?
Or just having a cleaner, cleaner option?
Yep. So, so again, I think, I think, I think we're very close to having electric vehicles on the ballot. We weren't, we weren't there this year.
Would it be possible to have propositions that are tied to one another, where the community could choose, yes, we want the electric option?
It is possible. Yep. Yep, yep, it's possible. A, a little bit complex, but not, not out of the realm. When, when we voted last February for the capital project, it was structured because there were a couple of components to that. So it was structured in sort of an if-then, or this only if that kind of a, kind of a way. So I'm sure, I'm sure it could be. Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, I'll just roll back the tape, as Warner Wolf used to say about sports. And 15 years ago, when we had our conversation about trying to get solar on the schools, and, you know, I, I recognize at the time you had, you were looking at payback periods, and, you know, I think the term of 11 years or something came up, and, you know, that seemed like a long time. Well, you know, here we are 15 years later. You know, the town has done their solar private, we're producing more than we're utilizing in all our accounts. We've got our charging infrastructure in place, we've got still excess, it's all clean. Not only is it clean, but it's all free at this point because we've paid for, you know, the infrastructure to, to deliver it. So our taxes, you know, you talk about the tax gap, we haven't raised taxes in eight years. And because we're making these investments that are driving down our costs as well as driving down our emissions, so we would just really strongly encourage you as both the educators and the administrators of the majority of our tax-related dollars to please, you know, let's, let's see it.
Yep. And, and we are, we're moving in that direction. The, the solar project will be financially beneficial right out of the gate with the combination of state aid and the energy produced by the system. So we are moving there.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, I've covered 15. Okay. One real quick. The pre-K program, we have a lot of young families that have moved into Red Hook. Is it still a lottery?
Yes.
And you foresee it, even though you're adding?
It depends on how many parents apply.
Okay.
But we have 30 slots, we're capping the class at 15.
So you have two.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have less of a need of the, that amount of buses and vehicles now that we're down the slow on enrollment?
Still have area to cover.
Part of the issue is the geography.
I understand we still have the same routes, but, but less stops means less time.
Yep, and, and maybe smaller buses over time. Yeah, the, the geography is still a challenge in terms of where they're laid out, but yeah, tho- those are analyses that will be ongoing as well.
I do have one question related to the declining enrollment, you know, and, and that's one example of it, right? You know, how, how is the district projecting all of the different ways that that enrollment and the demographic changes that are driving it will impact the district over time?
So, so right now, we are focusing primarily on staffing plans because that's where most of our money is. There certainly will be other impacts, but the, the main place we're focusing is, is staffing projections. It's, it's pretty easy to do calculations at the elementary level because it's just a number of kids divided by number of classes. It gets more complicated when you get to the secondary level. But those were some significant conversations as we went through this budget development cycle, and they'll continue, obviously, to be discussed. So our primary focus has been staffing projections. It is inefficient to, to do staff reductions by layoffs, so we would really hope to be able to do the staff reductions appropriately by attrition rather than by layoff, and those are things that, that's the primary area that we're focusing on.
And how far out does your modeling go? I mean, are you looking pretty much on a one- or two-year cycle, or are you looking five, 10 years into the future?
Um, well, depending on what grade level you're at, you can, is, is how much data that you have. So at the kindergarten level, you've really only got five years of data based on live birth projections compared to actual, actual enrollments. But as you move through the system, you can see a lot further out.
Yeah, I think what we'll, what we'll struggle with at the high schools, we offer a ton of courses. So over time, you can't have three kids sitting in a class. So we are discussing future trends of what students need to take, how we can convert some of our classes into college classes. So we are looking at all of that because we offer IB, AP, college, honors. There won't be enough kids to sit in all these classes. So over time, we'll have to look at what students are selecting, you know, what, what's the most value for the community to keep going. So we will definitely have to make some of those choices in the future. There won't be enough students to sit in the classes.
That's interesting. I remember years ago, there was discussion, should Germantown and Red Hook merge, or should, you know, Germantown and Hudson merge? And of course, you know, everybody talked about, well, we don't want that many students in our school district, but actually, the total number of students between Red Hook and Germantown is now less than what Red Hook was. We've cut, we're 2/3rds the population we were not that long ago, right? So, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us some time at the meeting. Thanks very much.
Next up on our agenda, we have a resolution to approve a modified police service agreement, just updating the annual budget amount and the hourly rate. The contract is here. Any questions? I think we do want to just make sure that accurately, the language accurately reflects the fact that it's the beginning of the year, which these rates begin. Did you notice one of the other changes is that we have to conform to the four-hour minimum? It's in the union agreement that we work off of. Chris, do you remember what, what page the proration language is?
So that's, that's from the resolution.
The resolution itself, right.
When we look at the agreement itself, it actually says, well, the agreement says that the agreement is effective January 1st.
January 1st.
Right, and that it's $95,000 a year divided and built monthly. So I think that their expectation is that it starts January 1 in 2023.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, yeah. So that's, that's, do we need to work on that?
And you indicated that you needed to catch up payments, basically, right?
Yeah.
So I think the to be prorated for 2023 probably should come out, right?
Yeah.
And so can I just clarify a question administratively, then? I, I think Chris just said, but we've been paying them at the 2022 rate for these initial months of 2022, and you just sort of make up the difference whilst this is in place? Is that how that...
Well, actually, no, we have withheld payments.
Okay.
Because we can't pay without a number. And so we had to update and have it corrected.
Okay.
So that's with their knowledge and permission, but we, we always notify any one of our municipalities or vendors when they need to update the agreements.
The other part, $55 an hour is correct, but your point is a nuance that be, beware that there's a minimum of four hours, right?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we'll make that modification to the resolution. And this is resolution number...
27.
27, thank you, yeah. Date of May 9th, authorizing the amendment of police services agreement with the village of Red Hook. And I so move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you all very much.
27.
And all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
There we go. We're gonna skip number three for now. We're gonna skip number four for now, since we have our engineer here. We're gonna go directly to number five, which is a task order to approve the feasibility study to extend the very recently connected Village of Red Hook central business district sewer system all the way down the Route 9 corridor, our traditional neighborhood district. And with us tonight, Brandy Nelson is here to talk about what's involved and probably most importantly, when we're all done with this, who can we ask for some money to get the project accomplished? Brandy, thanks very much.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Hopefully you can hear me. Good evening, for your record, I'm Brandy Nelson with Tanya Bond. And this evening, as supervisor, has queued up for you, we have a task order for what is called a preliminary engineering report, and that comes from Environmental Facilities Corporation Parliance. They've got a specific format that they want if you're gonna consider funding a project through them in the future. So recognizing that that may be a future desire, we would recommend setting up the preliminary engineering in their format. That just makes the grant pursuit process move forward more quickly. The timing on this is being raised at this point in time because there is some substantial funding that has flowed from the federal government to the state in a program called WEA, which is Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. And there will be a grant funding round that will have grant applications due July 28th of this year, and a preliminary engineering report is a prerequisite of applying for one of those grants. So we thought it was a good opportunity to consider that. I'm sure you all have talked about this before. For the last couple of years, we actually tried to get a grant from EFC to cover the preliminary engineering report. And unfortunately, the town's priorities of driving density to the Route 9 corridor don't align with EFC's priorities, and in addition, the village did not yet have their system up and running. And so the folks at EFC just kept saying, you know, it's too early, it's too early, it's too early. If we pursue grant funding to do the preliminary engineering report, first, there's no guarantee of that, and we would not be able to apply under this round if we, and so for your consideration, it is for the town to fund that preliminary engineering report now, which would allow us to position to apply. report now, which would allow us to be positioned to apply for grant funding after doing the feasibility study. How much detail would you all like in terms of why feasibility study? Is that helpful for those who may be watching from afar? Or has there been much discussion at this boards level about the why?
Well, we have over those four years that we've been applying, talking to the public about it. But I think you've covered the basics, which is essentially, without the study of what's involved, you can't apply for the funding. And certainly, from a traditional neighborhood district, it gets severely underutilized if each property needs to have an individual septic system, and you don't get the lot coverage that you need, and you don't get the design flexibility, and so on and so forth. I think what, you know, certainly, what the board needs to hear and the public needs to hear is that, you know, we're serious about trying to give those property owners the type of flexibility in order to maximize and to fulfill the vision of the traditional neighborhood district.
Right, and there are some recent examples of folks that have made application to the planning board in the form of the traditional neighborhood development proposal. And, you know, what we find is that their space is limited because they need really large septic systems to support the commercial and residential combination uses. So, unless there's central sewer, we can't really fulfill the vision of that corridor that's laid out in the TND.
And we have not been successful with the grants because in this sort of convoluted world we live in, you need to have, you know, demonstrated failures and water contamination in order to rank high up on the list. And obviously, with efforts like this, it's all about prevention. So, we'll do this study ourselves. We'll hope that we can document, you know, whatever risks are, you know, apparent to this incredible aquifer that we have that we need to protect and see where we go from there. If you gave us some idea that we need to, in the next few months, be ready to apply?
Yeah, so, this effort would include preparing the feasibility study, which has four tasks associated with it, which is identifying, defining the district that would be served, so generally, the TND corridor, estimating the potential for wastewater flows that would be generated from a full build-out scenario there, and then doing some alternatives analysis on collection and treatment options, including an option to connect with the village, and then developing the report and the cost estimates necessary to include in the application. And then, in addition, we added a fifth task, which would be actually making the application to EFC. So, with the timing of all of that, our goal would be to get started right away upon authorization, and within six weeks or so, have a preliminary engineering report for discussion before this board so that we would be in position to pass whatever authorizing resolutions, et cetera, are necessary under the WIA program and make the application ahead of the July 28 deadline. It's a lot to get done in a small amount of time, so... But, you know, we were just discussing the other day that this funding opportunity came up, and it's probably a good shot for you guys this year.
Good. And not only benefits to the property owners in the TND and the remaining 21, I think, property owners who are not service to your...in the village on Route 9, but also, it becomes more affordable once it's constructed to all the users of the sewer district. There's more pockets, if you will, to share in the cost of ongoing operations, so benefits to all, I think.
I had a sort of a specific technical question. I'm very happy to see this study moving forward, and I think that it's strategic to do it now when the pots of money for implementation are available. I think this is covered. This is under task two, the estimates of wastewater flows. But I just wanted to double-check. There's a focus on the sort of modeling of the full build-out of the business area in particular. But I assume that that would include, you know, sort of the conceptual TND that includes, like, mixed use and potentially multifamily housing development as well?
Yeah, usually, what we'll do is take a look at it in terms of what does the zoning allow at kind of like a maximum build-out? And so, yes, so, it would include any sort of mixed residential business.
Some of those areas, when I was on the planning board where the fire was, there was planned, developed, was mixed use.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely.
Very ready. That's where we are.
So moved.
Right. So, this is a resolution number, well, I'm skipping around 28, dated May 9th, approving the execution. No, that's not it. Next.
Task order for Tanya Bond.
Task order for Tanya Bond. An iso move. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna go home right now and start working on it right now.
I have to call Erin, and yes, she has to get started on it tomorrow. Yeah, we will definitely be in touch. I think there's a couple of intermediate touchpoints, just to make sure we're staying on the same page.
Thanks. Would you, because you've been having so much fun tonight, would you like to stick around for a few extra minutes?
I'm happy to stick around.
We might mention one possible additional purchase involved with the acquisition of the Cooking Ham West property. And so, we did finish our vote, yeah? Okay. Can we jump now, since we're all over the place? Can we jump to the acquisition of Cooking Ham Farm West? Okay, for the folks at home, Cooking Ham Farm was split up essentially in half, the east side, the west side, amongst family members. And we've been approached now by both sides to say, we're selling. Are you interested in protecting the farm? And that is what's in front of this board, and we have been in negotiations for some time. And we have been gathering information and data, but essentially, I will put up here on the screen for folks at home. At least, I think I will. Hopefully, the map is in there. There we go. To orient you, this is Route 9, just north of the village. Of course, rather, just north of the center of the village. It's still within the village. In fact, here is the village line, which, as we discussed, on the west side, this cuts the...no, sorry, on the east side, this cuts through the farm property itself. The property is defined by this black border here. It goes over here, sorry. There's a little...this is our water facility right here. You see how close the property goes to that? There's a little finger that connects to the Sawkill, which also connects to the Rec Park, a recreational park. It then goes around this seven-acre privately owned parcel. It then comes over here, adjacent to Abrams Park. There's another parcel over here, makes its way all the way to Lickwood Avenue. What was also interesting, we discovered, was that Abrams Park is actually encroaching, it goes over here, into the Cooking Ham Farm parcels. What the board is considering doing is acquiring the properties, including the home, by the way I should say, acquiring the properties temporarily in order to secure conservation easement, to also retain in fee additional lands for Abrams Park, additional lands over here, next to our water facility, to provide a sufficient buffer, and to provide for some trails in order to connect from one park over to the other. So, there's lots of municipal uses, even more that we can consider. And so, we are in discussion with our partners in conservation to see if they are interested in this project. We intend to use community preservation fund monies, as we did on the eastern side. And so, that advisory board will be sent this application by the landowner for funding. There are significant amount of important agricultural soils, 70 acres of statewide. This is the second highest level of soil. 23.7 are prime soil acres. To show you what's being actively farmed, if you wouldn't see sort of the greenish part of this aerial, that's here. And over in this section here as well. This middle section over here, a large part of it was actually mined for soil. So, it sits down low. It doesn't have high-quality soils left on it. It's quite...it's a little bit rocky as well. So, Brandy?
Yes.
So, I can let you go home. Can you explain to folks why it might be advantageous for the town to retain a portion of these woods here, adjacent to our water facility?
Yes, absolutely. So, the village's water...or, excuse me, the village, I apologize, the town's water comes from wells, and the state recommends that the municipality control a wellhead buffer area. And so, prior to considering this, we have not had control of the entire 200-foot radius buffer, so this would afford you that opportunity.
Well, that was even a bump, wasn't it?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Brandy. As with the eastern side, as I said earlier, we're gonna be using community preservation funds, we believe, as part of the acquisition. We have sufficient funding in that account. Prior to closing, we have over $3 million in that account. We don't anticipate retaining the farmland. We don't anticipate retaining the house lot, all of which is included in the purchase. We do anticipate retaining a portion of these wooden...wooded lands. Thank you, I can speak again. Wooded lands for both the buffer and for some additional acreage for Abrams Park. And then, obviously, the farmlands will be resold if, in fact, they are protected and put up for resale. So, what we are doing tonight is really just taking a beginning look at the environmental review, the SEACR, and then we are going to set a public hearing for our next meeting. That's September 24.
Or possibly May.
Or...September 24, May 24. It's all the same. May 24, thank you, Chris. Now, I need to look up what's happening on September 24.
Maybe you want to go to the front page of that?
Let's go to our EAF. And this would be under SEACR for Type 1 action because it's in excess of 100 acres. It's just a technical classification. The name of the project is Acquisition of Cooking Ham Farm West Parcels and Purchase of Interest in Cooking Ham Farm West. And the purpose of the acquisition is to preserve the four parcels of land totaling approximately 115 acres. The community benefits include ecological, economic, and aesthetic benefits to the community, as described more fully in the patch of F. If the acquisitions move forward, the next step will be preparation of plans for further consideration by the town board, including SEACR review. So, this is really for the acquisition, while we have ideas of what we might want to do in the future with small portions of that property. Really, all of that is of a speculative nature. But what we are doing, the review for tonight, is the acquisition itself. And so, it's...the action is consistent with government documents, and it is subject to approvals, our approvals, the town board, a recommendation by the CPF committee. It is not in the designated waterway or in the LWRP. It says, in a community within a code, yes, but not within the LWRP. And it...
The primary purpose of reviewing this at this point is to type the action and determine what type of proceeding you need to consider, so you're not...
I thought we might go for a little bit of it, but we can do that at our next meeting.
I will note that Ted Fink provided some very helpful partial analysis as an addendum to the EAF to...
Schedule.
Right, to go through the aspects of the partial and the preservation goals that were identified in the preservation plan, as a background for review.
Yeah, I think that's the best part of the SEACR review for those who want to read about it. So, let's look at our resolutions. One is the classification, which I put it out for you. Off the press. If you pass that down to Julia.
Can you project that, or you don't have that to project? Could you just read it, I guess?
I'm gonna read that. It's...you can't...it's a resolution number 29, classifying the action and establishing lead agency for the Cooking Ham West acquisition. I'll read it. Whereas the town board of the town of Red Hook is considering the potential acquisition of land and interest in the Cooking Ham Farm West of All Honey Post Road, using funds from the Red Hook Community Preservation Fund. Red Hook Open Space Incentive Zoning Program, a potential town financing. The purpose of this acquisition is to preserve four parcels of land totaling 115 acres. The acquisitions provide community benefits, and I mentioned those earlier. Whereas there has been prepared and submitted an environmental assessment form for the action dated yesterday, the board has reviewed the thresholds for Type 1 and Type 2, and because this exceeds 100 acres, it's a Type 1 action. After examining the EAF, we've determined that there are no other involved on federal agencies on this matter, and the town board hereby determines that the proposed action Type 1 and declares itself lead agency. Be it further resolved, the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to discharge any other SEACR responsibilities as required in this regard. Who would like to move resolution 29? Jacob Testa?
So moved.
Is there a second, Julia Solomon? Just asking. Any further discussion? All right. If not, all in favor, Bill Hamon?
Aye.
Myself, thank you very much. Okay, we have a second resolution, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the proposed purchase of an interest in lands at Cooking Ham Farm West under the town CPF program, and our attorney had agreed. And our attorney had a great idea not to hold it in September.
And Robert, are we, administratively, are we holding two separate public hearings? One for the CPF funds and one for the acquisition?
That is correct. Uh, well, the public hearing, yes, we are, for the CPF.
The purchase of interest.
Yes, and then the purchase itself. Um, this is thirty. Let's say we, seven thirty-five on the twenty-fourth of May. ISO move, is there a second?
Second.
Resolution nine. Any further discussion, Julia? Jacob? Okay. Very good, do we have another resolution?
Yep.
Yeah, we got a fee of purchase.
The acquisition.
On number, where do you might that?
Should be right next to the other one, right behind it.
It should be.
It should be.
It should be. Here, there, and should, there it is. Resolution thirty-one, I thought it was hiding. Establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the proposed purchase of Cooking Ham Farm West under a fourteen acre farm, thereabouts, final survey to be conducted. Um, and, uh, consisting of seventy acres statewide, twenty-three prime, um, with associated farmhouse, farm structures, important water resources, and lands adjacent to existing village and town parks. Has been made available for sale only as a single assemblage, the West Farm Assemblage. And whereas in consideration of the conditions of sale as a single assemblage and the importance of the unique resources offered by the site, the town is proposing to purchase the West Farm Assemblage as a whole at a price determined by the town to reflect fair market value for the purpose of preservation of open space authorized by GML, section two four seven. Um, we are considering the potential, uh, use of funds pursuant to one forty-three forty-nine dash two for a portion of such costs. And, um, the, uh, acquisition is also, uh, to be considered, the, the portion of it for potential, um, lands for aquifer protection and for addition to existing park lands. So we're calling for a public hearing. We're interested in what folks have to say about the proposal. And, um, we've prepared a part one EAF. So shall we set a slightly later time for this portion? Maybe seven forty-five on? Do you think May twenty-fourth sound good to you? I would very much like to know resolution thirty-one, if that's okay with you all. Is there a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye. Did we vote on the last one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was perfect. I moved in second and I don't remember voting aye on it.
Well, we know we're going too fast for me, but now we're going too fast for you.
I thought you asked, there's a discussion, and I said no.
Yes, I also said no, but I assumed...
I don't think there was aye, but aye.
Aye.
Tell me to slow down, if you need to. Brenda, you're gonna stay for the whole thing?
I wasn't trying to be excused, it's kind of a pleasure to see you all.
Don't you have a long drive?
A little bit, it's a long drive.
Yeah.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Wonderful, okay. Um, we're jumping all, all, all around these days, aren't we? Why don't we go to, uh, something rather boring, which is an amendment to the water connection agreement, essentially an extension of the water connection agreement, which has, uh, recently elapsed. And is an important feature of our resiliency. The interconnection between the water district of the village and the town. And, um, also a requirement for AFC funding, um, that the village received. And so, this is resolution thirty-two. This extension would, um, by the way, last until November one, twenty twenty-eight. I think an earlier draft had a typo of twenty twenty-five, this is now twenty twenty-eight.
Well, the contract says twenty-eight, but the resolution's, I mean, the contract says twenty-five, but that's gonna be changed for the village request to twenty-eight because they explained that AFC is requiring them to have
Yeah.
a commitment for that long of a time.
For five years, yeah. So let's make that...
So the resolution says twenty-eight.
Yeah, the resolution says twenty-eight. The contract now in my hand or any says twenty-eight. To match. So with that added, um, who would like to move resolution number thirty-two, moves the liaison to the water district?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
And myself, thank you very much. Okay. Last but not least, before we go into our attorney-client executive session, we have a rather unique, students, a rather unique situation where we have been granted, um, some funds because of all the renewable clean energy work that we've been doing. We've been granted ten thousand dollars to, um, purchase all electric cleaner. When I say cleaner, these single cycle engines that are in landscaping, whether it's your mower, whether it's your leaf blower, um, very harmful for the planet. Um, lots of emissions, very inefficient machines. Um, imagine you're operating your cell phone and you're putting in gasoline or diesel in order to do that. Well, it's not too different with landscaping equipment, quite frankly. So you'll see there's already, in the marketplace, a transitioning happening. Um, what we wanna do is we wanna assist as we feel we can do best, which is to help educate folks. And the best way you can educate folks on the benefits of going electric with landscaping equipment is to take it out into the community. So we're, we going to different neighborhoods. This program will be, um, coordinated through the Red Hook Community Center, which hires, uh, young adults, um, each summer. And so, they will be deploying them, um, uh, with the assistance of, uh, John Kuhn. Um, we hope to be using our recently purchased all-electric F-150 in order to deliver the equipment, um, to these neighborhoods. And these young adults will be giving, you ready for the bad joke? They will be demoing the equipment. Demoing.
Wait, what does that mean?
Yeah. That's why there are no requirements, except residency to be on the town board. Um, demoing the equipment for, uh, folks in the community so they can see just how easy it is, just how clean it is. And the other thing it is is very quiet. So you don't need to go crazy over your neighbor mowing hours on end because it won't be that loud when they do. So, um, this is a very exciting opportunity for us. Um, I do think we have one or two blanks here to fill in for resolution. Are we at thirty-three? Of course we are. My favorite number growing up. Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, that's number thirty-three. Do you even know who we are?
Yeah.
You don't?
Fantastic basketball player.
What was his name, what was his name before it was Kareem Abdul-Jabbar?
I know, but...
What, what was it?
Blue as hell, well, I can't pronounce it.
Blue Alcindor, very good. Okay, uh, resolution number thirty-three, before we go ahead and vote on that, we got the ten thousand dollars. Let's just make sure in the contract that we, uh, insert that dollar amount.
I think it is on the front page on total amount of the word.
Okay.
I think you did do that.
Anything else we need to add to that contract before we vote on? And then this, obviously, will, there always could be a little tweak here or there, depending on what night service or when we send it back. But this is essentially their contract that we saw. All right, resolution number thirty-three, I'm very excited to move this one as well. May I? Who would like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. I was hoping it would be you. Okay.
I think you're on this...
Can we undo, can we undo a second?
Oh, Julia?
It was Julia.
I was just around when we were talking about it.
Um, any further discussion? Okay. Very good. Um, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Wonderful. Did we actually complete all the work on our agenda this quickly? Before nine o'clock, that's the good news. Folks, um, students, we are going to go in what's called executive session to discuss the matter that's under negotiation. But what's not under negotiation is I will sign your forms for you. So if you bring them up, um, I'd be happy to do that. And thank you very much for coming to participate in government. And I hope that we did such a good job, you will all sign up for positions in your community.
If there's any question about whether you were here or not, it'd be on Panda TV.
That's right, it'll be live and on Panda.
Could I hear an actual motion?
Yes. So, at, yes, at the ti, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a matter under negotiation, consequence of which could materially affect the price. There's a second. By Bill Hamel. Autumn, thanks for coming. Uh, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
You have everything but a name. Can we work on that? What, what might it be today?
I thought you said attorney claim earlier. This is executive now, yes.
You don't have your name under here? Well, how am I vouching if I don't even know you have a name? With the name? Wait, I didn't get your name. Company, thanks, company. Thanks very much. Jared Mendez. Jared? Make sure it's not super. Awesome. Thanks very much. You, you would get a gold star for being early, but I didn't see a place for the number four.
The number was tired, I was like, yeah.
Is that mom in the back?
Yeah.
Thanks, mom.
I'm gonna tell you, very interesting to be here because I'm not from here, I'm from the city. So learning about water and what you're doing is quite fascinating. That's all I've got to say to you.
Oh, well, good.
Because I'm, I'm used to turning on the tap, there's no well water.
That's right.
Sewer, we pay, you know what I mean? So when I moved up here, it was a wake-up call. So when you come to a town meeting like this, I'm learning every day, whatever. Oh, yeah, with the lawnmower, I do have one that's solar powered, so.
There you go.
I'm getting with the problem because that loud noise?
Yeah, right.
I don't know, the waves does not, because we're not used to that in the...
That's right, nobody's public.
What is that noise? And it was somebody's leaf blower, but that is a leaf blower?
I know, right?
It's insane. So to learn all this is quite fascinating. And that preserve thing is very interesting to learn about that.
Well, great.
Land and all that, so.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
I might join you. I live in Wiseville, so I'm learning every day living up here. Well water and can't use, you know, do many loads of laundry like I do.
Water's gotta come from somewhere.
But thank you, I enjoyed it.
Thank you. You too.
Good neighbors here, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good weekend, enjoy, thank you.